Good evening. We're sorry for the delay when things happen. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge Believers. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll please.
Janutus?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Coachy?
Yes.
Isaak?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of April 16th, 2018. Any corrections? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus seconded by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes.
Isaak?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of April 16th, 2018. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus seconded by Spinks. Call the roll please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes.
Isaak?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of wards two and six. Ward meetings for wards two and six on April 23rd. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Saunders seconded by Rhodes. Call the roll please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes.
Isaak?
Yes.
And presentations, we have a couple tonight. One, I think we're gonna be witnessing a presentation and one we have to give a presentation. Let me go with the giving the presentation first and then we'll hear from our young folks from the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council. I'd like to call Larry Zilbert up.
What?
Larry is the owner and operator of Cleveland Jewelry up at Rockside and Northfield. It's our great privilege to congratulate you on being in business up there for 30 years, Sergeant Lee. We were a lot younger then, back when I was the fire marshal, going in there and picking on your fire extinguishers and stuff. Anyhow, it's a great thing to have a business with that kind of longevity in town. And I know we have a bunch of them and, but today, it was today that you started, at this date.
Yes.
That's excellent. And again, we thank you for being up there. I know you've been a friend of the city, you've been a big supporter of ours, and we appreciate that. I know you've helped out the police department on different situations with jewelry, and they're very much appreciative of what you do there, too. So I just want to thank you for being there and I don't think it'll be another 30 years.
No.
Those are tough enough. I won't be there for you for 30 either. Hey, I'd like to read this for you. Significant recognition to Cleveland Jewelry Wholesale Jewelers. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express recognition and congratulations to Larry Zilbert, business owner of Cleveland Jewelry Wholesale Jewelers, as it celebrates its 30th anniversary. We wish to not only recognize you for your years of valuable service in Bedford, but drawing visitors through your TV commercials and supporting the local festivals. On behalf of all the citizens of Bedford, we extend sincere congratulations and best wishes to Cleveland Jewelry Wholesale Jewelers under 30th anniversary in Bedford. I've got something else for you. Councilwoman Spinks, you come on.
It's just very nice. You're welcome.
And I don't even like you. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Larry Zilbert, Cleveland Jewelry Exchange, in congratulation and appreciation for 30 years of business in Bedford, Ohio. And out of those 30 years, most of them have been in Ward 1.
Oh.
He's had a lot of challenges and he's, has stayed with us with all these challenges for 30 years from the landlord, not me.
Landlord.
It's so nice. I just had to deal with this situation, going in here this weekend.
I'm sorry.
And we just appreciate you. I appreciate you as a business. I appreciate you as a family, but mainly as a business, sticking with our city, believing in our city, helping out our city in every way that you can. And I just want you to know, as a council person in Ward 1, that I appreciate you.
You know, Ward, I started in 1988 with Stacy Lynn Rafflau over there. She was beginning to get into it. And my wife, Lisa, started with me. And it's been a real challenge. Landlord's been a challenge. And I thank all of you for coming to my store and kept me alive. Thank you.
And my sincere condolences for losing a friend and employee of his for almost 30 years, was Karen 30 years, and she was very caring to me as well. Karen just passed away of cancer, what, a week ago?
That money we buried.
And so this part of this certificate is dedicated to Karen and her also sticking with Larry and seeking into this town.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this, for honoring this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Now, I think if you'd like to hear from our young people, Hawthorne Valley Youth Council, and Deb, if you want to start it off and then we'll hear from the kids.
Absolutely. I'll start it off. I just want to thank everyone for your support. Youth Council's been in existence for eight years and will be going into our ninth year in September. These are the best of the best in Bedford.
Oh, yeah.
They are, they really are. I just can't thank you enough for sponsoring the program and helping these youth become tomorrow's leaders today. They have done a lot of community service and I'm gonna let them talk to you about it. They've learned about local government through hands-on experience through the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council. The first week of April, second week of April, they just came back from Columbus where they presented bills and briefs. The bill got passed in the committee, it got passed in the senate, and the Youth Council vetoed it. Our youth governor, I'm sorry, the youth governor vetoed it. It's like, what? So they had to rally to try to get a two-thirds vote on the floor, so they learned a lot about state government and what it takes to get the bill passed. It's a great bill and I'm hoping that they'll bring it back next year. It's about education now and I want to go out there just here, so I just want to have me talk to you a little bit about it before we go in here, actually. So I'm gonna have them talk to you about what they've done, how long they've been in Youth Council, and I'll let them take it away.
Good president.
I'm the president this year. Your turn, everyone, to you. I'm the president.
State your name first.
She wipes it in.
Hi, my name is Sarah Namison. I am a sophomore at Bedford High School. This is my third year in Youth Council and I have done judicial all three years. I've learned throughout this program that it takes a lot of leadership skills and a lot of time and energy that you have to put yourself, put into it in order to make things work. And you also have to not only kind of build goals for others that are supporting you and around you, but build goals for yourself in order to make whatever you're doing work, whether it be in legislative, judicial, or executive. We have done a lot of different community service projects, from food pantries to helping out at a nursing home and things like that. Yeah. So, and it was like this year while I was down in Columbus, I had applied to be an associate justice for next year and I have to go to a leadership camp in June. And, yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, explain a little about judicial. When she says judicial, she means the Supreme Court. She served on the Supreme Court along with other students and they actually served as attorneys on one side or the other side of a case that was actually heard by the Supreme Court. Turned the tables around and they actually had a chance to serve on the bench with the Black Rose, judging on cases that were heard by the Supreme Court. And they had to make decisions that other students were presenting. At the final day, they got to hear the results of what the Supreme Court actually decided on the case. They weren't too far off. That's really good.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Alexis Miller. I'm in 10th grade at Bedford High School. This is my second year in Youth Council and both years I've been in legislative. Hello.
Hi.
I'm Kayla. I'm doing it at Bedford High School. This is my first year doing Hawthorne Valley Youth Council. So our bill was about finding an alternative to graduation instead of going by state testing. And the reason why we're concerned about this, because the problem with state testing is that it only shows whether a student is proficient. It does not show or record the student's growth of skills or anything of that sort. It's also unfair because in the state of Ohio, many of our school districts do not have equal funding and so many of our schools in urban and rural areas do not have the proper tools to get the proficient scores on these state tests. So we tried the alternative of using like community service and like a career exploration or an internship as a way to get credits to graduate for that.
I want to follow up. What I've learned from Youth Council is that you can't compare your success to another person's because we all come from a different area, we all come from different experiences and it's not coming to the same spot. And like Sarah said, community service, media, like nursing homes, we participated in the senior prom, serving the dogs as they don't serve us.
Okay, I've learned so far, this is my first year doing this program, and I really do it for so many other students to do this because it is such a wonderful experience. What I've learned that if you are a person that wants to get into politics or if you have issues with something, you need to have passion because people are gonna see you down and you need that passion to keep going. And also, people will play dirty, too. We learned that down the road. People play dirty. It's all about having that true worth ethic and that passion if you want change. And it also showed me that you don't have to wait. If you see something that bothers you, that's a real issue, you can always do something about it and you can always speak up for it. That's definitely something I've learned. And I've also learned how to listen to more to other people and not to be as stubborn as I was before. And also, like with the community service, one of my favorite ones was for Thanksgiving, we delivered meals to the elderly in Oakwood. So that's something I really liked, so, yeah, thank you.
And you learned some valuable lessons at a very young age that took some of us a lot longer than that. Quick for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cameron Jackson. I'm in the 10th grade at Bedford High School. This is my second year in Youth Council and second year doing judicial. What I've learned in judicial is that whatever case you get, you'll be put on the side and you may feel one way about the side, but you can't really express that if you're against say, if you feel like, my case was that a girl was, came to school supposedly under the influence of marijuana and she was suspended for it and the principal agreed to watch her, make sure she was safe. And the girl walked out of school and then she was raped. Now, I was on the side for her and so I did win my case saying that the school was responsible. But if I were on the other side and I felt that, well, she was raped, I can't really say that in the case I have to defend the state of Ohio. So that's what I learned, that no matter what side of the case you're on, if you're against what you feel, you still have to, you still have to find a way to say that, that your side shouldn't be charged for that. And community service projects, on May 5th, I, me, Alexis, and some other people went to the, a nursing home and made crafts and crafts for the people there. And that was a good experience because it shows that, that we, young people care, not only just being at home, not doing anything, that we can take time, love, or day to serve people that probably have served in the military for us or people that probably helped our community out in life.
Very good. Deb, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I didn't. Deb Ladkey, Quirky Council, Oakwood Village, also administrator of the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council. I love these kids and I tell the parents, these are my kids. At the end of the day, I give them back, but when they're in my care, they're mine. They may not look like me, but they're mine. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and have the kids present a little bit about what they've learned. So thank you so much for your, for your funding, for your backing, and for your interest. And could I get a picture, would it be out of order if I get a picture of the kids and the council?
No, not very much, sure.
All right.
And while you're doing that, I think we ought to show our appreciation to these kids for what they do. I'm always constantly saying, you know, the kids at the high school, we got really great kids up here at the high school. We need to see more of these kids out in public. We've got other groups at the high school I've been fortunate to work with that do really good things, that are good kids. And I tell everybody, don't judge by a few knuckleheads you see walking in the street or whatever. Because when I went to school there, we had knuckleheads that walked in the street. I'm probably one of them. And, but kids like this, smart kids, I'm happy to see these kids and I know they're gonna come up here and take our positions and, not too quickly, I hope. Sometimes we have to make changes just to put things in here. But I know we're in good hands, we got kids, and there's a ton of them up at that high school that are like these kids. And, yeah, I'm just so proud of what they do and Deb, thank you so much for what you do with them. And I would ask the gentleman here from, and sister, from Testa regarding the planning Take a quick shot and, uh... Do you get everybody in there? commission's recommendation, requesting conditional use approval to use the building located All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Chase her.
All right.
Thank you.
at 1200 Broadway Avenue for the Redemption Center Church.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to inform me, sir?
Just for the record, this is other presentations, so allow me to present your case. Are you answer questions or any questions, sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Tony McCanty, Land Use Council of Buckingham Doolittle Burrows. On behalf of Testa Enterprises, Inc., the property owner of the subject property, here with me is Mr. Paul Testa, the authorized representative of Testa Enterprises. Also, we have Reverend May, he is also the applicant seeking the church use for the subject property, which is a conditional use. And we have Sister Dorothee Ann here with us as well. She's one of the Sisters of Mercy who used to own the property which Testa acquired. We are seeking conditional use to allow for a church use. This property is in the R1 zoning district. Church use is a conditional use under this zoning district. It's important to note that church use is not an expressly permitted use anywhere in the zoning code, it's always a conditional use, so we have to come before council to make that request. Planning Commission did vote to recommend this council adopt this conditional use. It is our understanding and reviewing some of the concerns with council, some of the concerns expressed with the city, that there were some safety issues that were of issue because the parking lot associated with this property is across the street from the subject church. We're here to tell you we're willing to work with the city, we certainly don't want any safety issues. We're willing to put in reasonable safeguards such as a crossing guard, striping, better signing, those types of things. We'll note historically speaking, and I'll try to be brief here, this was used previously by the sisters. The structure looks like a church structure, is used for some of the religious activities of the sisters and as a social hall. In 1969, I believe around that time, catering business came in and operated until just before Mr. Testa took over the property. During that time, the parking lot across the street was utilized for catering events, many times at night, many times with large groups and gatherings, and many times alcohol was being served. So those safety issues were in existence with the previous uses of this property. We're here to propose that this proposed church use is gonna be much less impactful. Reverend May will talk about this, but with their comping, is having a cup, one or two Sunday services, a Wednesday Bible study, and periodic weddings and funerals as the need may arise. We'd like to propose that this conditional use is proper and this council should adopt it for two primary reasons. Once, the use of the parking area across the street is actually authorized under your zoning code, and I know that was a concern, but under your zoning code, you allow for parking to be on separate parcels, as long as it's 1,000 feet from the front entrance. Here, this parking lot's immediately across the street, it's less than 1,000 feet from the front entrance. So it's expressly permitted. But again, we recognize potential safety issues and we're willing to work with the city to mitigate those. And second, if you reviewed the conditional use criteria under the zoning code, under 1917.20, we satisfied that criteria. Basically, the proposed use is properly located, this structure is similar to a church structure, it's constructed similar to a church, and historically had been used for religious purposes. And that's exactly what we're looking to do. It's not gonna generate excessive traffic through residential neighborhoods, it's actually located right on Broadway Avenue, which is convenient, so you're not gonna have a lot of traffic going through the smaller residential streets. The church will serve the surrounding residential areas and also, it can't be relocated to a less restrictive area because again, church use is a conditional use in the residential districts. There is no district in where it's expressly permitted use. And then finally, the final criteria, the church will not discourage residential development, it's primarily developed out, and it will not have an impact on property values because again, historically it's been used for religious purposes and catering purposes. So enough for me, I know the Cavs are coming on, so let's get to the people that count. I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Testa, Testa Enterprises. Mr. Testa, if you could just explain to the council a little bit of your background and a little description of the property.
So I'm Paul Testa, president of Testa Enterprises. I've been here before you. We went through a journey to get this property set up for senior housing. And I just want to say, you know, I've been in business 51 years. I happen to have 13 restaurants and facilities, liquor and catering and so forth in my portfolio, all of which don't pay their bills, all of which are probably tenants. When I inherited this property, December 28th, the tenant was gone. So consequently, I know at one point, we all talked about keeping it there, and I had no problem keeping it there, but they're gone when I got there. So it didn't throw them out, it just happened to be that they weren't paying the bills and that's the norm. So I put a sign up just to offer it to the public and see what came. We got a lot of calls, quite frankly, four of them were churches. Okay? One was a facility to house people who were having problems with dependency and so forth, and a couple caterers didn't have any money. And so, you know, I do have loans, I do have bankers, I do have to fulfill the obligation and keep a solid cash flow coming in to pay payments. And when Reverend May contacted me, I started thinking about, you know, what this whole property started as, as a religious facility, you know, I inherited, good or bad, some things there that I have to pay homage to and what the sisters built here. One of them is the stations that cross. They're very valuable and, you know, for us in affordable housing, there's not a lot of money to pay for things over and above the care of the seniors. When you start inheriting these things, they're gonna take a lot of maintenance and care. You know, when Pastor May came up and talked about his congregation taking him over, quite frankly, I looked at that as a godsend. No, it will honor the sisters, it will take care of the property, there are parishes to take care of it, and I won't have the money to spend, but I don't have coming in because we're affordable housing to maintain these things. So that's a benefit to everybody concerned, okay? I do feel that, that we do have historic tax credits and you might remember, in the last year or so, we've had some problems with the economy, with the market conditions, and the tax credit's value went from about 94 cents to 82 cents. Those are the dollars we get to build it. Not only did the sisters cut down their cost of buying this facility, we had to figure out how to raise more money, so we went into historic tax credits. Historic tax credits now are issued for historic structures, all the buildings here, including this facility here. That means that we are now limited of what can happen in there, not just the outside, but to the inside. So they've went through, they've met with Pastor May, and we just can't go in and start remodeling the building because we then negate all the tax credits, which takes away the investors, investment in the project, which takes away the ability to finish the whole complex with the sisters and everything and the senior housing. So it really causes a problem, bringing somebody in, no matter how much, pretty much as is, not change anything inside to speak of, what he wants to change hasn't been approved by the state and the National Historic Tax Credit Organization. So we really feel it's the right use. And, you know, just as a, as a person who's been in the business for 50-some years, this is the least impactful to a community. You know, it doesn't hurt home values like a restaurant or other things can do, it doesn't create traffic all the time at nights like other things can do, and I just think it's a good thing for the community. It takes it back to its roots, even though it's been a catering hall for 30 years. So, that's all I have.
Just a quick question, is it a sale or a lease?
It's a sale/purchase, that's a lease/purchase. So basically, for the next four or five years, unless they settle into purchase, it's gonna be a taxable issue, it's gonna be in my name, they're gonna lease it with the option to purchase, but paying for it over five years. End of five years, it'll be theirs.
Are you opposed to subleasing it to a caterer if one should develop or come forward, rather?
I don't understand the question. If a caterer came today and said he wanted to lease it?
Sublease it to you.
Oh. Yeah, it's a question for Pastor May. Once he has a lease with me, he can do whatever he wants with the building, as long as it meets historical credits. remodeling the building because we then negate all the tax credits, which takes away the investors', investment in the project, which takes away the ability to finish the whole complex with the Sisters and everything and the senior housing. So it really causes a problem, bringing somebody in, no matter how much, to keep it pretty much as is, not change anything inside to speak of, what he wants to change has been approved by the state and the National Historic Tax Credit Organization. So we really feel it's the right use. And you know, just as a person who's been in the business for 50-some years, this is the least impactful to a community. You know, it doesn't hurt home values like a restaurant or other things can do, it doesn't create traffic all the time at nights like other things can do, and I just think it's a good thing for the community. It takes it back to its roots, even though it's been a catering hall for 30 years. So that's all I have.
Just a quick question, is it a sale or a lease? Just curious.
It's a sale/purchase, that's a lease/purchase. So basically, for the next four or five years, unless they settle into purchase, it's gonna be a taxable issue, it's gonna be in my name, they're gonna lease it with the option to purchase, but paying for it over five years. In the five years, it'll be theirs.
Are you opposed to subleasing it to a caterer if one should develop or come forward, rather?
I don't understand the question. If a caterer came today and said he wanted to lease it?
Sublease it to you.
Oh. Yeah, it's a question for Pastor May. Once he has a lease with me, he can do whatever he wants with the building, as long as it meets historical credits. So that's up to them, and he'll address that issue. I know that's an issue, and I know that was, it was good for the community, you know, there's a benefit to that kinda stuff. And so, we work with them to say, what can we do to satisfy everybody?
Mr. Testa, I brought up that it was used as religious purposes, but in your testimony to the Planning Commission, you said you thought the church was the right thing to do and a perfect use since it was built by the Sisters as a gathering hall.
Right.
Not as a church.
Not as a church.
As ever used as a church.
I didn't say it was used as a church. Used by a religious order.
Yeah, well, I'm just quoting what you stated here. It's a gathering hall, which is what a...
Which is what a church is.
Yes, can be, can be, and also catering. And you stated it looked like a church. Well, churches don't have stages, they have altars and it would've been lower. So to me, it doesn't look like a church, it looks like an entertainment facility, because the stage is up high, where an altar is stepped up and...
With all due respect, the outside, it has a cross on the top.
Well, that's from the Sisters, and that's not a good thing. Making a cross doesn't make it a church.
Like a church to me, Mayor. I drove past, yeah, maybe.
I have no objection to it being that, but... And then, like you said, inside, you can't touch anything inside, but you can remodel it. It's been remodeled over the years, so that hasn't been a problem.
But it wasn't a historic structure then. Now that it's been certified as a historic structure, we are limited in what we can do. We have a whole list of things we can do.
Is something they did recently, like the fountain and all that?
That's before. Now that they look at it as it is today, that fountain's gotta stay, the stage has to stay, they can put up some freestanding walls, but pretty much it has to stay the way it is. Because that's just the way, that's what we inherited when you got the historic tax credits. So a catering hall, may or may not like it the way it is. You know, this happens to work perfectly for the church.
Yeah, and as you know, with all this going down, we really wanted to keep it as a hall because we have no other hall in town that I can use that is to that extent.
I understand.
Smaller halls, but that's what that was. And we're kinda left without one.
If we would've, if the guy was still there and was paying his bills, it just wouldn't be an issue.
Well, to be fair, he's paying them now, so... But what happened then, we're not here to just paint that, we don't wanna go over that. Any other questions?
Yeah, as I mentioned in the back room, my main concern, of course, and it doesn't matter what goes into that building, the crosswalk on State Route 14, it dates back, I don't know, 30, 40 years. It's never been brought up the standard manual with the normal crosswalking list. Well, now there are lit signs that are actually put on it, but the state requires the crosswalk signs, which are, well, I don't know if you wanna call it lime green or fluorescent green or whatever it is. Those are not on the tree logs and stuff like that. My main concern is people crossing there, because when it was used as a hall, heck, I've almost been hit several times over there too. So, right now, with 271 traffic, and it's gonna continue until the end of 2020, the traffic on Broadway has increased like threefold from what it was before. Coming up from the bottom of the hill, it's a blind spot over there, so you don't see people in that pedestrian crosswalk until you're right on top of it. So, the better the signage, the lighting or something to be done in there, and it doesn't matter whether it's a church or if it's used as a hall or it's used as anything, we need to upgrade that to the current standards that are used for a mid-block crosswalk. It is a state route, so I don't even know if ODA has a say-so in that, but there, it does need to have something in there, no matter what goes in there.
Agreed. Agreed.
We're willing to work with the city to upgrade.
You can't shut down the building because the park is across the street.
Well, actually, it's an advantage with it closed with all this extra traffic, but I understand where you're coming from.
You need it closed, you have a blanked property, so it's not good for the neighbors. Okay, any questions?
Pastor May, would you like to say something?
Well, I was gonna, it's up to you, Mayor, I was gonna have Sister Dorothy Ann just hopefully talk, and then end with Pastor May at the end.
Okay, and I appreciate everybody's indulgence, because this is a huge decision for that area, so.
Sister Dorothy Ann?
My name is Sister Dorothy Ann Platnica, and with the Sisters of Charity Cincinnati, who were the owners of the property which was purchased by the Testa Companies. I'll be very brief, and I have two new council members, so you haven't heard this before, but the others have, so I'll be brief, because I know you're familiar with it. I was just asked to comment how the property's been used over the years. We came, the Sisters, the Incean Sisters, this gets very confusing, I'm not gonna go into why all this unfolded, but we came to the Cleveland Diocese specifically to Bedford in 1928. We had a Slovak background, which is significant, and it plays into why we were able to become a historic district, because many of our ministries and projects were geared to or rooted in the Slovak traditions. And I bring that up because that is why the shrine was built. We came in '28, and by 1930, there was a statue of Mary, which drew hundreds of people to that property, because the Slovak immigrants came from Europe and remembered this devotion to Mary in Europe, and they wanted to replicate it here. They came from Youngstown, Cleveland, Lorraine, Akron. There were hundreds of people who came from the 1930s through, I would say, the early 70s, when it began to dwindle off. There are a lot of reasons for that. So the property, not just the shrine, but the property serviced all those religious purposes that were initiated by people, not just the Sisters, okay? We also, that property was the headquarters for the religious order that lived there. Our administration was there, people who were in training began there, and then eventually the high school was built, which is now like a parth villa. So a lot of history there. I know your concern, I've heard it a number of times about the traffic. All I can tell you, from the 1930s on, people have been crossing Broadway, because we never had parking on our property sufficient to accommodate the people who came to the shrine. Buses, literally full buses, would come from Youngstown, Lorraine, et cetera. They'd park in the parking lot, have to walk across and then down. And of course, you're right, the traffic has increased exponentially. We fortunately think I'd have never had an accident. When there were groups that came, there was someone there to direct traffic. A number of times, it was auxiliary police from the city who would help with that, and then eventually the pedestrian signal was overhead, excuse me. As you heard, the catering began just as a way to bring some income in. We built the auditorium for the Sisters to use to serve the people who came, we called them pilgrimages, who came to spend the day on the property, so we would serve meals there. We had no other place to accommodate them. So in that sense, it was, you know, tied to the religious use of the property. Actual catering began around 1969, 1970, and when that, and that caterer was Peter Donato retired, he'd been there 28 years, and then it became Catered Elegance, and that began around 1996. Throughout that time, people were crossing Broadway, there was nowhere else for them to go. There is space behind the party center that would probably accommodate a good 12 or more cars if you had handicapped needs, et cetera. There's a sizable space there, because we took down a home that had been there and needed to come down. So I'm just saying, nobody can predict an accident or predict avoiding one completely, but just to assure you that it's been going on for decades with people crossing that The one advantage I see as far as using the building as a church, your people were coming at a set time and pretty much leaving at a set time, which would enable you to have someone to help with the crossing. It would be different, such as a restaurant, where people are coming and going constantly at whatever hour. So I see that part clearly as an advantage. And the other one, of course, is that the Testa people have, though it's not going to be a religiously affiliated site, meaning the apartments, they are very much mindful of what the property has been, want to respect what has been when the Sisters were there. So certainly, the presence of the church on the property would be in great harmony with that. So I'd be happy to talk to anybody later if you need some clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Any questions for Sister? Thank you.
Finally, I'd like to introduce Reverend May. Reverend May, could you please introduce yourself to council and provide them with a little bit of your background and the background of your church?
Good evening, Your Honor, distinguished council. I don't think I've met maybe one or two of you before, so I'm probably fairly new to you. I'm a Bedford-born child, I'm born in 1948, not too far from here, and grew up in Bedford schools, on Lamson Avenue, which I think is just a stone's throw right over here. I have the pictures with me of my mother, she graduated from Bedford in 1941, was the valedictorian. My father in war sent her a love letter, which I just found in my files, again, been living on Lamson Avenue. So I went to St. Ia School, raised in the Catholic faith, later in my later years to St. Rita's in Solon, and then on into college at Kent State University, where I majored in fighting professional arts and picked up a minor in education. But it was at that time I felt the call of God upon my life. By then, my family had moved out to war, but my mother, I was thinking about her the other day, worked in the war, had a plant in Rockside and Broadway, right over there. So my family was deeply engrossed in the city. The Drusso family was my maiden name of my mother, John Drusso, Marty Drusso, and you know somebody, and my mother pleaded. And the Drusso family still owns the San Pablo Gas Station up at Norfield and Columbus Road. So that's my family still in the city. From Kent State, I went on to, into religious training. I have two master's degrees in theology from Ashland Theological Seminary, and went on further and had my doctorate from Ashland Theological Seminary. I've been an adjunct professor for them, teaching numerous topics and classes. I've also been one of their advisors in the Doctor of Ministry program, which means typically I help people write their dissertations. So I've been a busy guy, I've been pastoring for 40 years. I pastored at the same church for 40 years, which is kinda unusual. I stepped back, my son, who served in the armed services, had a tour in Afghanistan, came back with post-traumatic stress and then died from that a short time later. I took a little bit of time off, and then I felt the call back, so I started a new work, which happens to be right now in Bedford Heights, and it has grown in three years up to about 100 members, so we're looking for more permanent space, I guess I should say, to house a worship service that we honor. If you go to church, that is some typical thing, you do new worship space of sanctuary, as it's called, or auditorium, as has been mentioned. Historic credits allows us to change the stage, Your Honor, to an altar. So there's some things we can do, there's some things we can't do, so we don't jump through the state hoops with that, and working with the Testa Corporation to accomplish all those things. That says a little bit about me, I'm an author, I have four books out. One, I wrote a tour book to the Holy Land, so one of the things that God has graced me to do is to travel the Holy Land and leave tours over there and help people walk through the holy sites, like the Stations of the Cross. My life has been blessed to literally walk those up the Via de la Rosa of the City of Jerusalem. I wrote a pain book and helped people with chronic pain, and work over at Merrymount Hospital, the Cleveland Clinic, helping people who struggle with pain issues, trying to help them with opiate conditions and that kinda stuff. I wrote another one on spirituality, another one on how to listen to God, how to hear His voice, and then I have a new book that should be coming out in a couple months on emotional pain. The Cleveland Clinic recently published that our brain processes emotional pain and physical pain in the same place. They don't even know if our brain knows the difference, so that's how we look at spirituality and how it impacts us. My church probably would be called evangelical for a word, I mean, those are all labels, we all make an image with that, but very orthodox, teaching at a seminary, I've taught all kinds of people, Catholics, Lutherans, Baptists, Methodists, just about everybody, to help them process their faith and grow deeper into things of God. We have looked at the safety issues quite intently. I talked to Sergeant Paul Keller about that, they agreed more signage would help. I talked to Clint Beller, the service director here at the city, he agreed signage would help, he wasn't sure about the crosswalk. If the state would paint that, or they were even allowed to paint that, but that was one of the things we were requesting. But that's something that would have to be explored, even reducing the speed limit. We went as that far to talk to him, how do we approach the state, maybe to make it 20 miles than the 35 because of the curve. I talked to Signal Services, which services the city of Bedford with all their signage, they're the ones that put up the caution light that's above the crosswalk now, and they assured me more signs would be appropriate. We got a cost on that, because that would be our expense, not the expense to the city. So we've done all our research on that, willing to absorb those costs, willing to install those, and have crosswalk guards already in the churches who would take on that responsibility. Any questions for me? It was a quick run-through.
Where this place is located, do you know that within a mile of each way, there's also churches right there on that Broadway?
Yeah, churches, very stylistic, you know, like I said, there's a Baptist church, labels for every church, Catholic churches. I was raised Catholic for a long, long time, grew up in the Catholic faith, was gonna be a priesthood until I met my first girlfriend, so that kinda changes things, so that's just a way to play.
Well, add the Catholic church, that makes three churches, because that's actually behind it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have three churches all within one mile already. 24 churches in town. No, I'm just talking about that.
Can I just show you a photograph? Sure. My work at Kent State was studying photography, and when this building came up for sale, I went over and talked to Paul Testa, because as a young boy, the Catholic churches would take us to the Stations of the Cross, and we would walk through those outdoor Stations of the Cross. And as a young boy, I had to be 10 to 12 years old, I believe I had an encounter with Christ, and ever since, those stations have been very dear to me. I even have a little parrot next to my bed still today, as a 68-year adult. And about 20 years ago, I went back and took this photo of the Stations of the Cross with the statuary inside, and I put myself in the picture down here in the corner, in the reflection glass, because this was the station that so impacted my life, and I just find it so providential that I come full circle, some 58 years later, to the same property that touched me as a young boy. Then I find out tonight, I'm Slovenian, I had no idea that was Slovenian-based. So, you know, Paul and I have talked about the providential piece, we've looked at the historicity, and if I do tours to Israel, I'm into history, I'm a history buff, and we wanna preserve the history, we wanna preserve the Stations of the Cross and preserve the mission of the Sisters of Charity, and actually continue that forward into the future.
You have some specific questions? Yes?
No disrespect, but since you've been up here, all I've heard, all we've heard is all about you. We've heard nothing about the church itself, the congregation, so I'd like to know a little bit more about the church itself.
Sure, Sandy.
I've heard, you've told us all about you, what your vision is, what you've done, but nothing about this church. The concerns that I have, because I've had churches go into buildings in my ward, and same thing, we have a congregation of 200, and there was concern, because the one place that this minister was telling me that they have a congregation of 200, the building only held 75 people. So that was concern, and then once they got in there, it was used for everything but a church. It was only used for a church every once in a while. So there's concerns there, and I would like to know, like I said, we've heard all about you, the Planning Commission heard all about you, but nothing about the congregation. but nothing about the congregation. You're saying you didn't state that you're outgrowing the church where you are in Bedford Heights. So I'd like to know about the congregation, not about you.
Yeah, well, embedded in my introduction was comments about my church, that we are basically evangelical. We have a hundred members. This church is three years old. So it was a pioneered work by me, again, coming out of basically our retirement and then the death of my son. So we're on a good growth pattern for what we do. I'm very involved with, I sat in the Cleveland Clinic and working with hurting people, with grieving groups and that kind of thing. So basically, we meet on Sunday morning at ten o'clock. And we would have a midweek service, typically a Bible study or a women's meeting or something like that.
So kind of a non-denominational?
Yeah, inner, basically inner. I have a lot of Catholics in my group. I have black, white, I have Jew, Koreans, I have everything.
Do y'all baptize?
Do we? What?
Do baptisms?
Water baptism? Yes.
Well, you do that at a...
Well, sometimes we've done it at our church picnic. Sometimes we'll do that. We usually rent space in the favorite metro parks. If you go this week with me next year, I'll baptize you in the River Jordan.
No, thank you, Paul. You baptize at my church. I'm good. I'm good.
A lot of people, you know, want to make it a special little event over there, so.
There was some question about whether you would consider renting out the hall space in the off days. You're only using Sundays and Wednesdays. You've got five other days that are available. And is that in your plan or...
Well, I think it can be, yeah, the, again, the available space. And then sometimes, like where we are now, we have to reset up for Sunday morning, so they set up for us. So we have to look at those seating configurations. What's the use? The kitchen would have to be updated again because some of the appliances have been taken out before we got there. But we would be open to that. It would certainly want to be a blessing to the city. That's our role here, to work in tandem with you. If you Google, there's a great, hundreds of articles, of the impact of a city, of the impact of a church on the city. A church impacts the city economically, socially, educationally. It helps fight crime, it brings down deviants. And that's why we're here. I don't know if we can have enough churches. They're very stylistic and people go to all different kinds and all different sizes, so.
Like you said, we're not anti-church.
Yeah.
We have, like you mentioned, twenty-four churches in town. We also have a group of eight to ten ministers and deacons and that that pray for the city every week. They meet every week. They've been doing it for four or five years now. So we appreciate what they do for us, I'm sure. Think that we're working out. And that's a good thing. Any other questions? Paul?
Do you have, I know you say you have a hundred parishioners at the present time. How large can this building that you would assume be?
I believe the last occupancy permit, I think, was for four hundred. But that's with the wings.
Right.
So, you know, when we talk about the states saying we can put up some walls, we need to make some child space, so.
One other thing, do you have, will you be using benches or chairs to accommodate?
Chairs, yeah, chairs. And again, which works if you want to rent it to something else or change the configuration, so.
Well, I know that some benches could be folded up and put away too. But I'm just saying, just for accommodation purposes, I was just wondering about the capacity of how much you could endure. And on yours, they have to four hundred?
Well, yeah, well, at least that's what it was. So I'm not sure, I guess, when we get to the fire marshal and all those types of things, we could take a look at that. But like the Catholic faith has what, sometimes four or five services a day. So you would begin to look, when you hit a ceiling, you would begin to look at a Sunday service or an evening service or something like that.
Just one more. You said something about weddings and funerals. Were those planned to be catered or no, just to service?
They're choosing up to the bride and groom because sometimes they go elsewhere. A lot of funerals, even now, are not quite done in a church. I do, as I said, I do a lot of work with calhouns on Rockside. I've been around for forty years. I know the city by funeral directors and homes. So it's kind of sad, but yeah, a lot of the funerals are outside of the church these days and the same. Sometimes the wedding is not in a church and then elsewhere.
So that'd be geared to weddings and funerals for your parishioners or whatever you call them?
Well, it's space then. If somebody needs space for a funeral, prior churches. Actually, I've built churches all over the world, across Jamaica, Haiti, Russia, Romania, Ozara, na na na. So often for like a funeral, we would not charge for space. We want to serve community and if people have to need. Weddings are a little bit different because you can go just about anywhere and get some space. But yeah, that would be part of rental agreements, I guess.
Yeah, we're just trying to look at everything. Like you said, we were, our original thoughts were to maintain it as a hall. The idea of a church, I mean, we hadn't even thought of that. That's why we have so many questions and, you know, when you hear something new for the first time, you're kind of, you know, think about all the ramifications and...
Well, like I tried to, like I was pointing out to Sandy, I tried to tell you a little bit about me, saying, you know, my track record has been very consistent, very faithful for over forty years. And to tell you a little bit about my church, because it's a new work, if it is, it's still in a real early stage.
Anything else? Thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know the cabs are on and we have a lengthy agenda. Thanks to everybody in the audience. We just would like to respectfully request that this council approve the planning commission's recommendation. Churches are conditional use. It's, this use is actually less impactful than the previous use of the subject property. And we satisfy the conditions under your code. We appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
As far as the cabs, you only got to watch the last five minutes. And again, I thank you to the audience for your indulgence here with this. Do I get things right? Reports, Mr. City Manager. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way ahead here. If I had Lori next to me, he'd poke me. Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-six dash eighteen.
It's an ordinance, a mandatory ordinance, number ninety-four seventy-three dash seventeen, regarding chapter thirteen eleven of the Code of High Ordinance of the City of Bedford by enacting new section thirteen eleven twenty-nine J entitled Certificate of Rental License and Inspection and Declaring an Emergency. This is a third reading, I believe.
Yep. Motion for suspension, Saunders, Rhodes, oral?
Janutis?
Yes.
Luwardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Miza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final.
Board meetings as well as the last couple of council meetings. We had participated in a first ring suburbs meeting with representatives from Kyler County in regards to delinquent property taxes. There's about forty to forty-five thousand properties that are delinquent in Kyler County. It's a substantial issue. The county is making some strides to try to address that. But what we've come across and what we learned in some of those meetings is that there are a handful of communities that are adopting what we're intending to do today. What that is, is prior to a rental certificate being occupied, the owner of that property must be current on the property taxes. What we've seen, the two communities that have enacted this, has actually seen a decrease in the delinquencies, drop almost to eighty percent on those rental properties. So unfortunately, there's, well, the majority of people do everything the correct way and there's certain groups that try to manipulate the system. And our goal is to, obviously, if there's going to be rentals, that we include this as a condition that they're current on their property taxes.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Oral?
Janutis?
Yes.
Luwardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Miza?
Yes.
Order number ninety-five ninety-three dash eighteen.
Approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and Quay Inc. authorizing execution of that agreement and authorizing the city manager to enter into an abatement compensation agreement of the Bedford City School District and declaring an emergency.
I believe it's our wish to pass this tonight. Motion for suspension, excluded by Spinks. Oral?
Janutis?
Yes.
Luwardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Miza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Miza, excluded by Saunders.
This is the tax abatement agreement that was negotiated with Mazda Bedford regarding their new auto dealership that's going to be constructed at the corner of Northfield and Rockside in Meadowbrook. There's twelve acres that they purchased. This, the old first merit bank will be demolished. The new dealership will be on that footprint. And again, it's a fifteen-year tax abatement. There is also going to be an abatement compensation agreement later on in tonight's agenda that we had negotiated with the Bedford City School District. An agreement that was unanimously approved at that last Thursday's school board meeting.
Thank you. And feeding taxes, not all the taxes. We still get payroll tax and abatements on the real estate.
This is simply property tax, right?
So we are getting something. Right now, we're getting nothing. So I think it's a good thing. People ask about the, why you always giving away these tax breaks and stuff. It kind of equated to sports, the free agency, where the players now can go out and make the best deals and they get all these kind of deals because they can shop their talent around. And it's the same with these businesses. They come in town, they can shop around where they want to go. And you just have to sweeten the deals. That's just the fact of doing business these days. Do we like to give away that? No, but it is a way of doing business. And Mazda, don't get me wrong, they did not threaten to move away or anything like that. But it's just the general way things are done now. And to help keep a business like this in town, it's a good thing. And we still do make tax money off of them, so it's not like we're giving away the farm. Oral, please.
Janutis?
Yes.
Luwardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Miza?
Yes.
Now we get to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go quickly. Just an update that I met with a service director regarding following the street assessment. We narrowed those streets down. Again, as I've previously mentioned, we're going to try to address the worst of those first. There's some streets that were last paved in nineteen ninety. Obviously, with the age of roads, that they're significantly overdue. What we are looking to do, again, following the tax increase, we're going to invest about four hundred thousand dollars in a road program. And we'll do that annually in addition to the sidewalk program. But we are waiting for an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to be made available through Kyler County. So what we're going to do is try to apply for that grant and add that to our four hundred thousand that we have already committed to. So we're looking at about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar road program. We're going to do as many streets as possible. We won't get caught up overnight, so it takes some time. But we're going to start with our streets first and continue to put pressure on Kyler County as well as ODOT to address some of their streets, Solon Road, Northfield, Broadway. We're going to take that approach. I'll have that list in this week's council packet on the streets that we are putting out for bid. Secondly, just a friendly reminder, the nineteenth is the annual shred day through the grant. That'll be right out here in the city hall parking lot, nine o'clock to twelve. We are, as we speak, Dominion is working to install the gas line across Broadway. They're going to be working through the evening tonight. There may be a period of time where they actually have to close a portion of it just for safety. They'll have a detour already in place if they need to do so. But they are making that crossing. Hopefully, everything goes well. And we'll continue to button up those open areas along Washington, Taylor. Those can be done accordingly. But first and foremost, as we all know, over the last two months, we need to make that crossing on Broadway. Friendly reminder that June is free permanent month for owner-occupied external, our exterior improvements to your home. So please take advantage of that. And just real quickly, I wanted to thank some of our local organizations. Wilery for the pancake breakfast that was done. Larry did a great job. Garding Club for Arbor Day. Otto and Dela Youth Council tonight. And congratulations to Larry. I don't know if he's gone or not. End of report. Try to be quick.
Thank you. Go on, Director.
Hey, I would echo Mr. Nelson's comments and have no further report other than I go, caps.
And we have no finance report tonight. Council reports. Mr. Janutis?
Thank you. First, I wasn't going to give a report, kind of busy, but hearing about the road program and the sidewalk program, that just has to be tremendous news to all the citizens because a lot of times complaining about the roads and whatnot. And it's really amazing how long we've gone without a roads program and a sidewalk program. The fact that Bedford is bringing it back, I think, is really significant and we should be very happy about that. When the convent was empty for a long time and the property seemed like a wet elephant, I wondered who was going to buy it. I took the occasion to walk the property and I also walked the Stations of the Cross. I'd never been there before. Being raised Lutheran, I was afraid to go there. I didn't know if I'd be liking. I did take the gage to go there. And it was really ama, it's an amazing property. And it's like none other in this entire area. And all the residents were just, you know, really concerned about what was going to happen there. And I guess it's something of a miracle that Mr. Testa came along because of all the things that could have happened there and all the things that we could have wished for, I don't think there could have been a better situation than having Mr. Testa come and work on this property in such a way that it just preserves that entire property the way it had always been and the way that we always remembered it. I can't think of a better situation that could have occurred for that property. And now, approaching this meeting, there was all kinds of objections to the church going into the, what had been the catered elegance facility. And just a lot of commotion and I haven't really been able to understand the objections to it clearly. Understand that there are some residents here that may object to it, that live in that area. It's probably unfortunate that those people who had come possibly, I'm told, to maybe complain about the church wouldn't be able to, been part of the discussion before or about to vote on it. But as we welcome a new car dealership, it's hard for me to understand, my limited understanding that I'd like to learn more about people's objections. What could be better than a church? And this man here has such a compelling history with that, with that area and, and what he's experienced in the Stations of the Cross. I, it's such a compelling history of this man and that property. I can't think of a better guardian for that. I can't think of a better guardian for that situation in the spirit of that location than to have, than to welcome Reverend May. Although, I hope that people's objections to it could be made more clearly and you decide to understand those objections. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy. I want to thank the Bill of Arts. Paul and I were there Friday for handing out some certificates for the birthday girls that were there, almost '93, '95, and '98. And the hospitality was excellent. Of course, I was glad to finally get invited and get to start going there regularly with the mayor, who usually hands these out. He was out of town, so anytime I get a chance to get a free piece of cake, I'm always there. Marty, die. Yes, but also tomorrow is election day, and everybody get out and vote. And at the Bill of Arts, in my ward, of course, is where the voting polls are, and I'll be standing out there pretty much all day. So you can go by and say hi. And go camps. That's it. Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
At the end of the first quarter, it's 32-28, so Cleveland's ahead. Back to normal city business. Dominion on Washington, you knew I was going to say something about that. If you look at the holes, especially the one in front of Central, the street is being undermined. It's caving into their hole. So I hope our engineer is going to go out there and make sure that they can pack that back in properly because we don't want that section of Washington to break off a foot or two inside in a settlement at a later date. That's not the only problem we have. We have it up by the library too because Tarble, being a brick street, will cave in without much trouble either because that one's also being undermined. So I'm hoping we keep an eye on some of those things. And at the same time, I'm getting some complaints on last year's repairs that Dominion did after they were done, specifically sidewalk slabs that have cracked because they're settling unevenly and stuff. I don't know if they're going to go back over some of the ones they did last year or what they're going to do, but some of these residents don't want to get nailed for sidewalk slabs if they ever have to sell. So that wasn't their fault.
There's a specific, direct those calls to my office, and what we'll do is we'll go out and we've addressed some of those accordingly, or Dominion has come back out and done restoration work that wasn't done to the satisfaction of what is needed. But I can't promise that every single one of those. If it's warranted, they'll come back. They've been genuine with that as far as even if someone's tree lawn isn't grading properly, if the grass didn't take what back.
Yeah, okay. I've got addresses on several ones, so I'll get them to you on that one. But like I said, it just seems like they're taking forever. On the same note, Dominion, is our, is their contractor paying for the water that they're using?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because they seem to always be hooked up to that hybrid by the services department. So I just want to make sure we're not eating that cost. I had another request from several people on streets specifically that had a lot of ash trees. Is there a grant program we can even look into maybe that start replacing some of these trees? Because some of these streets are pretty well naked that had nothing but ash trees. You know, we're supposed to be a tree city, and our streets are starting to get pretty empty. So I don't know if there's something available or...
We've looked at one in the past. There was a match that was required that we did not apply for two years ago. We weren't in a position to provide that match, and we didn't have it budgeted. It is a goal of ours, as I've spoken to our staff internally, to look at things that we need to do as we get out of the hole that we were in. And one of those is to resurrect, replant it. Are we there as if I'm budgeted for this year? No. But it's something that, you know, hopefully, we can start budgeting for as we used to do, as Mr. Janutis mentioned. You know, we went 10 years without having a road and sidewalk program. Obviously, we're not planting trees again, but the goal is to slowly bring those things back. And again, it's kind of one thing at a time. Well, if we can identify a grant that doesn't require a significant match, yeah, it's something that we can look at.
I just want to make sure that maybe we're looking at least because several people are indicating that, you know, some of these streets used to be nice camping streets, and now, like I said, they won't make it. So in any case, as was mentioned by Vic, tomorrow's election day, get out and vote. You may think it's only a primary, but there are some important issues like issue one, which will hopefully eliminate the gerrymandering that we have. This area has always been tied into, I hate to say it, gerrymandered districts. We don't seem to get very much representation because of that, but hopefully that will pass tomorrow so that we can start getting back to some reasonable district borders and get some representation. And lastly, Mr. Minaro, my 96-year-old resident on Norham, asked me to keep you reminded, make sure Norham gets done sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes.
Hello, everyone. How are you this evening? All right. So first of all, I wanted to let you know that tomorrow, we are having a team from the Columbus State House, or, well, State of Ohio, coming in to assess our downtown area. They're coming from Heritage Ohio, the Main Street Program. They're going to come down and tell us everything that's wrong with our downtown area. I'm sure that many of us could add to it. But they will be then taking that back to Columbus and coming back in a couple weeks with a plan to help us revitalize our downtown area. On our tomorrow night at Naturestone, 6:00 PM, they will be giving a presentation on why participating in the Main Street Program is a good thing for a community, why revitalization of our downtown area is vital to the health and vibrancy of the community. I'd love to see all of you there, so if you have time, please stop by. I wanted to remind everyone that baseball and softball signups are still open. Ellenwood's closed, so if you'd like to sign up or you'd like to sign a child up, just come up here to City Hall, and Annie can direct you to the rec center, and you'll be able to do that here. I'd also like to let everyone know the Bedford Garden Club will be having its plant sale on Friday and Saturday this week. It will be at the Lamson House. Ellenwood being closed, we can't have it there. We will be perking at Ellenwood, and then you'll cross the street to the Lamson House. I'd also like to remind you that Sunday is Mother's Day, so the plant sale's an excellent place to buy something for Mom. We will have lots and lots of hanging baskets. Last but not, actually, next to last but not least, we at the Garden Club just finished cleaning up the historical garden. If you've not had a chance to get out there to see the art fence that we had installed last year, I would love to see you take a visit there. It's quite beautiful right now. We've put mulch, we've heated everything, we've cleaned everything up, and the art fence is amazing. As always, I'd like to remind everyone that we will be posting the video from tonight's council meeting at bedfordward5.com. You can go to bedfordward5.com, sign up for updates, and you can get that video to your inbox every once a week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Ellenwood is closed, but they will be open tomorrow for voting in the gym. So if that's where you normally go to vote, Ellenwood will be open tomorrow in the gym for you to vote, if you vote normally there. I would like to take this time to thank Councilwoman Rhodes for a sticky situation that happened to me this, over the last past week, a very stressful situation where I was trying to get back property paintings that I had put blood, sweat, and tears into to get them back from a property owner downtown. Thank you, Ms. Rhodes, or Councilwoman Rhodes, for stepping in and getting my artwork back. She handled it very professionally. Thank you for what you have done or what you're trying to do downtown to get involved, working very diligently. Not to say that the city has done nothing over the last 25 years, but Ms. Rhodes is addressing things that need to be addressed down there, and I appreciate your professionalism on that. With that said, a remark was made. I did have to get the police involved. And a remark was made that the only reason that the police officer showed up is because of the councilwoman. Why took extreme offense to that remark? Because our guys are sworn in, and they're representing, came to represent me as a resident, a human being, as a person, they called, that needed their help. They showed up because it's their job, it's their duty, it's what they're sworn into. So when our guys were attacked on that, saying that I was using my ability or my power, which I don't have power, as I'm one of four votes as a councilperson. So I took offense to that. And I want to thank those police officers for being very professional. And like I said, it was a very stressful, stressful week for me, and I appreciate our guys in blue. I appreciate Councilwoman Rhodes diligently. End of conversation.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody had a little thunder tonight, but first we have to address the proper things, City Manager. Since spring has sprung, now the yards are starting to get cleared out and cleaned up and making your home presentable or where you're living presentable. We have a few people that have branches out, but next to their branches are leaves. So will the leaves be picked up with the branches? And grass clippings. I've noticed it in a couple yards coming around. I know it's not right, and I just can't knock on the door and say that it's not right.
They'll probably be posted with a warning because the back hall is not out right now. It's actually stripped down, getting repairs.
Okay. And people that have professional landscapers, just like smoke flowers, do they have to abide by any rules as the smoke flowers do? They just can't blow their grass out into the street they must clean up, or can they incite it if we saw it happen?
Yeah, they can't, they can't put their clippings in the road. They have to follow like any other.
It goes for homeowners, too.
Yes, I understand that. I'm sorry. I mean, excuse me, but I kind of took it for granted, everybody that's been here and that has been in our city for a long time knows that sometimes that leave it, to take that one with kid gloves. Lastly, you mentioned the streets. I need you to speak with the mayor of Maple Heights because part of my ward still is in, and we go into Maple Heights where my ward ends, but there's part of the street there on the road south. Lynn has done all she can do with the patching. And I know that we have strings kind of tied for grants and anything like that for road improvement, and we're trying to get into this as best we can with the money we have for this year. If she could possibly obtain a plan of some sort for that whole street, and we would be assessed just for a little bit that she has to cover. Our side, it would make a whole world of difference for the people in the county too, and other people that use that part of the ward for that goes into the heights if I do that again. And lastly, I have one thing. Everybody's happy when teams win and everything. There are a few people that get carried away. Last few nights, we've had fireworks. Not before the July, but because the team won, they were happy. But I was told, and it's not too far away from my own home, that the last game or the game before, somebody was happy and lit a, well, we know M8s are big. This is bigger than an M8. And the mortar was on the corner where it happened. I should have called, but I didn't. Left a hole in the ground, plus the remnants of the firework. So one of the other residents from another ward picked it up and took it away before the kids got on the bus the following morning. Somehow, in our newsletter, we have to make property owners or citizens aware that fireworks are not, they're exempt in Bedford, and you know, there's a fine thing they cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Little mess, I don't have to say a whole lot because everybody's set up this good. One thing I need to clarify, that same situation that Councilwoman Spinks was talking about, there were some comments made by the owner of the property that he didn't have to get any building inspections because the mayor told him that he didn't have to. Totally wrong. Anybody knows me, I don't play those kind of games. It's the law, you got to do it. So I want that on record. I did not tell him or anybody else that they don't have to get, as a former inspector, I know what it is, so you have to get inspected. That kind of talk is just nonsense. I just wanted to get that out there. Let's get on with the business. We at least see the last advert again. Ordinance number 9596-18.
Amending ordinance number 767105, authorizing the law to record to execute an amendment to the contract with Keith Weiner and Associates for the collection of past due tax collections in the coming emergency.
Okay, could I have motion for suspension by Lou Hardy, second by Spinks?
Janutis?
Yes.
Luhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizek.
I'll take it. This, we have a current contract with Keith Weiner and Associates regarding collections of the lump rates, income tax. Frank works very closely with them, as does Keith in our tax department. This amendment is to comply with the recent changes in the state tax code, specifically regarding the ability or inability to be reimbursed for certain legal fees associated with that. So our agreement that we're amending is basically to comply with the current tax law passed by the state.
Thank you. Let's call roll, please.
Janutis?
Yes.
Luhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Motion number 9597-18.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver an agreement with the Bedford City School District to pay certain sums to the district to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city and the school district.
Motion for suspension by Mizek, second by Rhodes. Motion for third and final by Lou Hardy, second by Janutis.
As I indicated earlier, what we're requiring new on any tax abatement over 50% is to enter into an abatement compensation agreement with the local school district. If you choose not to do that, there's an automatically that you would contribute 50% of setting income tax over a certain dollar. It's been historical that we have negotiated with them various rates. Some have been much lower. This rate is actually at 30%, although we are not getting any new jobs with this project. It's merely just a new dealership. So there's a income tax threshold here that we are not going to be at currently. There is the ability that if they would expand significantly and add payroll over this amount, we would then, it would kick in the agreement, and I'm not sure if it would come into play to be quite honest with you. But in any tax abatement situation, the entity that gives up the most is the local school district, so this is an agreement in good faith to try to compensate them in some manner for working with us with business development. And again, I'm sorry, again, it was, this was, agreement was put in front of the school board last Thursday, and it was unanimously approved by the board. and it was unanimously approved by the board.
Very good. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9598-18.
Authorizing the City Manager to participate in the ODOT winter contract for 2018-2019 for roads sold and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus. Again, talking about salt.
Salt.
One of the nicest things we've had so far.
Hey, you know, there has been a snow recorded as late as May 25th.
Yes. We're waiting for that.
I checked today.
Sorry.
This is, again, we're part of a consortium that what we do is we work with ODOT and we'll, to the best of our ability, we provide an estimate on a certain number of tonnage that we expect to use the fall and winter. ODOT then combines all of that and goes to secure the best rate price per ton. We've typically been in the high 30s. I believe last year we were around $28, $29 per ton. If you remember prior to these agreements, there was one year we paid in the 90s, 90 some dollars per ton. This has historically been a great partnership. But all this is doing is it's estimating the amount, which we've identified at 3,700 tons. What we will be required to do though, is we will be required to purchase 90% of that. It's a kind of a guessing game. We're going off of, you know, historical patterns. But that's our number that we feel is appropriate based on what we've used in the past. And again, it's just providing that to ODOT so that they'll go out and get, collect the bids.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9599-18.
Amending ordinance number 953817, making additional expenditure, appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2018 and declaring emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Saunders, second by Nizak.
This is, again, Frank put together the appropriations piece. The majority of these items council will see are identified on the personal services and various departments and funds. These reflect the 1% increase in wages that was negotiated with the three unions. There's also some appropriations in there as far as various grants that we were able to acquire, TASER grant, VAS grants, there's a fire equipment fund where other appropriations were made. And again, this is all done collectively, the majority of it reflects the personal services based on those agreements.
If you would hold that bungle up, we all know how thorough Frank is.
Anybody wants to see it.
The notes he gave, Mike. Why do we do that? A lot of research goes in why switching, not research, but time and effort on aligning our, our plan is, yeah. So it's just one example of how thorough Frank always is with his stuff, very good. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Ordinance number 9600-18.
Authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with AC Lawn Care and Landscaping for cleanup of the Bedford Park Terrace and Bedford Dale condos, declaring the above property a nuisance and declaring emergency.
And motion for suspension, Saunders, second by Nizak. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
This is a contract that was in addition to, AC Lawn Care does provide services to us as council previously passed a contract with them. Although Councilman Fluharty had identified an area that was significantly neglected, a trash lot that we, we had certified, or sent certified mail to all of the property owners condos requesting that be cleaned up or we would need to take the action and do it and then ultimately assess that. It was not done. We are working with AC Lawn Care to do so for $2,500. And this process will be, as we go through the assessment process later, that, later in the year, this will be the documentation needed to follow through with that.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion number 9601-18.
Authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into a contract with PBS Technologies, Inc., being the lowest responsible or responsible bidder and declaring emergency.
And motion for third, or for suspension, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Nizak, second by Saunders. Mike?
This contract is for the, as mentioned, liquid ferric chloride, which is provided and used down at the wastewater plant. This was bid. Out of the two bids that came in, PBS Technologies was the lowest and most responsive, at 22 cents per dry ton in comparison to the 29 cents per dry ton. We go through about 160,000 dry pounds per year. However, this is a demand contract and we only purchase as needed.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9602-18.
Authorizing the City Manager and the Chief of Police to enter into an agreement with the Village of Highland Hills for use of the Bedford City jail facilities and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Saunders, second by Rhodes.
This is very similar to, or actually exactly similar to all of the other contracts we've entered into with small entities. Prior to, we had stopped taking additional prisoners from other communities as we felt we were at a comfort level. However, one of our neighboring communities reopened their jail, which took a decent amount back to their own community. So now we have the space when necessary, if we need to provide, if you've noticed. Many of the contracts we've entered into, Moreland Hills, Highland Hills, they're, they're small communities. Obviously, if we don't have the space, we can't accommodate them. But what we do, we have the staffing, we're compliant, and meet all the standards. And again, from, from a mere revenue standpoint, you know, these contracts, last year we generated about 80 some thousand dollars. Our projections this year are to generate about 90,000 dollars. So we're staffed, we have the space, and obviously, when we need to, we can accommodate these other communities, and it'll be cost effective for us to do so. We would recommend passage. And again, we don't, you know, Walton Hills is another community we recently entered into. We're not going to have a lot of turnover with this. Typically, the prisoners that gets transported here are overnight, could be OVIs and things of that nature. Those communities have to provide the transportation and obviously cover other expenses that are necessary.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9603-18.
Authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with LE Scott Electrical, LLC, and declaring emergency.
And motion for suspension, by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Janutus. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a contract to install all of the new electrical light fixtures, close to 70 light fixtures in the Ellenwood facility. Our staff and collectively, we have worked to secure three different quotes, obviously acting as our own general contractor. Out of those three quotes, quotes. LE Scott Electrical was the lowest. And actually, the exact amount is going to be $7,800. And speaking on the next contract, which is with LeF Electric, that contract is $4,568. That's actually for the purchase of all of those fixtures, okay? Out of the two of them, when you combine, it's about $12,000, $13,000. That'll be all new lighting at the Ellenwood Center. And we were able to secure a NOPEC grant that is going to pay for all of this, 100%. So we will be able to upgrade all of those with LED fixtures at the facility at no cost to the city, so.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Ordinance number 9604-18.
Authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with Leaf Electric Energy Solutions for reasons stated prior and declaring emergency.
Motion for suspension, by Nizak, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Janutus. We heard the reasons from the City Manager, same apply here. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Resolution number 2523-18.
In a resolution approving and accepting the proposed 2018 tax budget for the year January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
And so I wish to do a first reading on that. There will be two more readings and then a public hearing on these, on these monies. It's our first step. Motion for first reading, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation of April 17, 2018, for Gregory Washington, 16202, Corkville Road, Maple Heights, is proposing to open a restaurant slash entertainment establishment located at 339 Columbus Road. It's a simple yes or no. Yes, you agree with the Planning Commission? No, you disagree. The Planning Commission voted no on this one. Correct. Correct. Just want to make sure that the page is straight. In the meantime, we have heard from Mr. Washington and got additional information that the Planning Commission had requested. Pretty much complied with just about everything they asked. So we have that information to take under consideration. Need a motion to accept.
Yes, I mean, no.
No, we need a first and second on that motion.
For Cochi?
We need a motion to put it up, then we go down.
So, I guess.
Motion by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Again, it's a, a yes, you agree with their no vote? No, you want to change it to a yes vote. Call the roll.
Janutus?
No.
Fluharty?
No.
Saunders?
No.
Rhodes?
No.
Spinks?
No.
Cochi?
No.
Niza?
No.
So that means Mr. Washington, that's, where's that? Washington, that's a yes for you.
Thank you. I make the hearing, I'll make you very proud. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. A motion to accept the, let you read.
Yes, sir. Can I get a motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation of April 17, 2018, of Brother Neil May, owner of Testa, Testa Enterprise Inc., requesting a conditional use approval to use develop located at 121 Broadway Avenue for Redemption Center Church, subject to the comments in today's minutes about safety, signing, stripping, crossing, if you decide to prove it. Get your motion to that.
The question here, Planning Commission, I don't know if I get the right one here. voted yes. They, they, Planning Commission, yeah, they passed it. So if you agree with their recommendation, it's a yes vote. If you disagree, it's a no vote. But before we vote, I know there's some people here that, also from the neighborhood, that want to speak. I totally blew up protocols, so I might as well do it for the rest of the night. If there's someone who'd like to speak from the neighborhoods, it's not, it won't. Can we get a first and a second? No. Just bring that up before we get to the first. Wait a minute.
Ask and be done.
Fault.
Yep, to go up there.
Yes.
This is the first time I've ever been in action since the economy. I was just gonna say, you know, so far it's been pretty cool. Hope to hear what you guys talk about. Lot of money, I'm not really a member, so.
Excuse me, but the protocol, you can't speak yet. We'll teach you something, it's about the issue with him. We do get to the, we get to the hearing of citizens, right? Like I say, it's only in fairness to everybody here. Sorry, it's, like I say, it's only in fairness to everybody here. If we let one side speak, we better let the other. Sure.
I'm sorry.
Kathy Williams, 111 Lamson. What happened to the variance with the zoning board that a church has to be so far away from a street and will reconnect collecting any tax revenue? Because at least when it was a catering place, they charged taxes for food or drink or whatever. Will the city be collecting any tax revenue?
Well, it's really not one of the factors considered in our decision.
Well, it's just a citizen's question.
Mr. Testa stated he'll be paying real estate taxes on the property and hopefully the church will make some income if they decide to embrace a catering business, but that's not one of the factors that we can consider in deciding to, whether or not to allow the use.
Churches for tax exempt.
No, well, it's being leased.
If it's being leased.
I'm not certain about their exemption status. Sort of irrelevant, to be honest with you, but also the reason about the variance was it was a non-conforming use, meaning that it was built and permitted by the city before we enacted the ordinances that are currently on the books and therefore they don't need a variance anymore because it already, it's a pre-existing building. If it was a new building, they would have to get a variance and so it's predated our building code. Legally, they don't need.
So, is it a little point?
Yes, and Mr. Beverly indicated that to me in, in the caucus as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Don Navertell, live on High Street, Bedford, and my issue pertains to the service department a little bit in the meeting.
I don't know where it's at, Don.
You can't do it?
No, not yet. We'll call you back. Just sit in the front row, we'll bring you back up with the young lady and then you can ask her. This is only about the, oh, church. Sorry. Do I have a motion? Oh, yeah. We have a motion to accept the yes vote by the planning commission. By Janutus, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
No.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
No.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
Congratulations. Motion passes.
Thank you, members.
Okay.
Last week, we have, can we get a motion to accept the planning commission recommendation of April 17 regarding Alex Jones, requesting a conditional use approval to use the existing building located at 776 Broadway Avenue to open a cigar store. The planning commission allowed that use, so a yes vote would be that you agree with the planning commission's decision.
Do I have a motion to accept? By Janutus, second by Fluharty. There was a bunch of controversy that it, just saw it as used as a cigar shop and will have just like a smoking lounge and it has to have too much.
Okay, well, the next quarter, they have to comply with all the recommendations of police, fire, and engineering, so they'll, they'll have to be inspected and comply with the other requirements there are.
Right, and it's not going to be a vape shop.
No, no, that's specifically excluded in the ministry, your honor, it's no vapor, no hookah, whatever you call it, this cigar zone, maybe cigarettes, I don't know, but it's a cigar zone.
A yes vote, you agree with the planning commission? Said yes, no vote, you get your decision to accept. Call the roll.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Niza?
Yes.
All right, finally, get to that portion of the meeting, the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comments.
Going to get up there? No.
Now you can. Sorry.
I stated my name, just a while ago, Navertell, Bedford. High Street. Okay, this pertains to the, into the service department. The other day, I think it was, that's what I wanted to say, we had the.
Yes.
Yeah. The tree lawn, where Empire came and took the branches off the trees, so the wires, they didn't get way to the last of wires, okay? That was Empire. Okay, so then, the same day in the evening, I had my tree cut down in the front yard, not on the tree lawn, but the front yard. Empire did do the tree lawn, though, the branches, okay, there was no problem there. So, I called, what was it, a couple days after that, I think it was just last Monday, I called the service department and I asked if she would, if someone could come with the chipper to do our branches that were laying, you know, on the tree lawn. And she says, who done it? Well, I couldn't think of the kid named, I done it, and said, right away, she says, well, Empire. And she said, well, Empire did it, they had to clean up the branches. I said, wait a minute, let me back tackle a bit, I'm sorry, I says, it was somebody that stated they used to work for Empire, or at least that's what he said. And she said, but you say Empire. I said, well, I retract that statement. I said, if you don't believe me, call, call Empire, they would have a contract, you know, on that particular day if they cut my tree. So, she said, okay, she says, we'll take care of it. So, the tree, the tree chippers, they came by, they did that store, they escaped me and did the other store. So I'm looking out there, they never did collect my branches. I think I, I left word at your office, too.
I got the notice at the end of it.
Yeah, so.
Let me look into it in the morning.
What happened there now?
I'll look into it in the morning.
Okay. Now, like I said, if you don't believe me, you can call Empire because there was no contract with them to cut my tree.
I believe you.
All right. I hope I hadn't picked up before the grass eyes, you know, on the tree lawn, and I need a new girt, too, that is all John Doe. If you believe me, still blouse for that. I thank you. Thank you.
Now, young lady, would you like to speak now?
She stepped out.
We would like to say, I will.
You'll take your turn next.
I won't take long. Nancy McCuskey, 197, Michael. I have a couple questions I have to ask you. First of all, where is 339, you said there's going to be a restaurant at 339 Columbus?
It's the corner of North Hill and Columbus, where Just Friends Restaurant was.
Yeah, but that isn't Columbus, that's North Hill.
But it's a Columbus address.
Those are 500 addresses already up on Columbus.
Not there. 500 doesn't start until you get past Archer.
Just till past Archer?
Yeah, because the auto shop is like 327.
Yeah, because someone's trying to figure out what stores are in between there. But what gets me is I'm reading and it says a restaurant and entertainment. What kind of entertainment are we going to have?
Well, it's going to have a jukebox, they're going to do poetry readings, stuff like that. It's not going to be bands and all that, there's no room for it in there.
Yeah, I think.
We had Mr. Washington in and he explained all of those things to us.
Well, you know, because the reason why I'm saying this is I wonder, because, you know, they have had trouble there over by Willard and they placed there.
It's going to be.
And I'm hoping that you're not going to have problems this place.
Well, we hope we don't have them anywhere, but it's a totally different kind of place. It's a restaurant where the other is but a lounge.
Well, I hope so. Also, I want to know, Mike, for three weeks, there has been this house at 100 gold, where there has been the green bag, big green bag, where they put trash or whatever they do. This has been there three weeks now. Nobody has come to pick that up. I don't know whose responsibility is that, did Timbo pick that up or what?
No, it's a property owner, actually, and they were, they were called about that. I can verify it, this road's brought it up from last week. It makes sense, I noticed, I was a property owner.
Because I, I come by today to make sure that it's still there, it's all been messed up, well.
Young lady, would you like to step up? We're getting three times the charm.
We'll tackle anybody that comes.
You don't have to. No, no problem. Put your mic down.
State your name and address.
Um, so, yeah, it's cool to see how like our local government works and how people talk about these issues and everything that goes on. Because, you know, it's cool because, you know, back at school and everything, we're like in our own environment, kids have been from high school. We're, we're all caught up in our own environment and everything, everything, and then forget that we are a part of this community. And so, to actually see what goes on and all the stuff you guys have to go through, it's pretty cool, so, yeah.
Library, yes?
Yes. Eric Nattie, speaking at half of the Southeast Perkins Library. We'll make this quick, but I think it's really important, I didn't want to table it, so. We're wrapping up some of our, we're halfway through some of our May programs and we're not going to go out early with the holiday coming up. But something I really definitely want to put out there is this Wednesday at 9:00 AM opens up for all of Coyote County Club of Libraries is our free summer camps. So these fill up, they do have space limits, so I just want to remind everybody that we have some great, we have four great camps coming specifically southeast. We have Alphabeton Action Camp for ages five to eight, Sappy Scientist Camp for ages seven to nine, Imagine Camp for ages eight to 13, and we also have something new for girls ages 15 to 18, Discovering Your Potential Camp, which is a leadership program. At some of our sister libraries, we have everything from creative painting, comics, digital animation, ACT, SAT prep. All of these things are within 10 minutes driving from Bedford. We're very lucky to have our own branches, lots, you know, 10 minutes away, you have Sol and Maple, Orangeville Heights, all of those have unique camps. Some other things I wanted to highlight is right now we're taking pre-registration for our summer reading program, and it's not just for kids and teens, it's also for adults, especially if you're going to read to your small children, you might as well knock off the name board, get some free stuff like Chipotle and food and stuff, like who doesn't like that? So, so we're taking some pre-registration for that. We will also be having a table at the Strawberry Festival that Saturday to hopefully get people to register, so come visit me, I'll have some freebies hopefully. And we'll also be doing a social media campaign during May as well as the month of August. We do not have our family story times because we focus on other things. We're doing outreach to schools to promote our reading. And, there's so many things, but I'm going to make it quick. We have a bunch of computer literacy classes for adults this month. This Friday, we're having Internet 101, this is so important. A lot of people come to the library just not with the basics of internet. And then on Saturday, we have Evaluating Websites, Internet 102. We also have Email 101 this month and Introduction to Microsoft, so. So we bring those up every couple months. So unfortunately, you've already missed Microsoft Word, but we will be offering it again. So I will leave some of this stuff at the front so you guys can grab it. The Cavs are winning by 15, I saw a chat. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to dig up my card.
I'm Danny S. Russell, 685 Old Grove Road, and I have something to say about us being a tree city. I understand, I understand the trimming of the trees, but in my front yard and the front yard next door to me, we have the great big old maples on our tree lawn abutting the sidewalk. They're uplifting the sidewalk, making it uneven, and then they came nine day and they literally just left me with a stump sticking out of the ground. It, it's horrible looking. I'd rather the tree had been cut down even with the ground and threw away with it than to have left what was left there. In my yard and in my next door neighbor's yard, it's just terrible. You know, there's almost no green on that tree at all and a bunch of cut-off stems here and there or torn thread. It's terrible, you know? Why be a tree city if that's what it's?
I agree 100%. The utility company went in and butchered those trees. They look like heck, and you're right, you're better off cut down. It's amazing how terrible they are.
It's, it's just terrible.